Well. Good evening and welcome to the March 27th Minnetonka School Board Study Session. It is six o'clock, which is the time for citizen input. Do we have anyone here wishing to give citizen input? All right, we will move past that item to the first item on our agenda, which is a discussion on student voice on the board. Superintendent Law.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have two school board goal items tonight to kick off the board meeting. The first is a very fun one, as we typically highlight students at each board meeting. We're going to have a discussion about student voice in district decision making, including potential student voice on the school board. But we're going to start with a summary of all the different ways we include student voice in our system, and we'll end the highlight with some students who have been participants in a variety of student activities. So, we have a presentation tonight, Dr. Getty. Just for the members of the public who are wondering about this topic, we're laying the foundation for ways that we involve students across the district. Student voice, as you all know, gives us insight to what's happening in our school system. We don't just include students at the high school. There are opportunities at every grade level for students to have a significant impact on the school, as we saw last board meeting with Minnetonka Middle School West, as we've seen at other meetings throughout the year with leadership opportunities at the elementary One of the ways that we include all students in decision making are through surveys, and we gather survey information on climate initiatives, on belonging information. We've also gathered student voice on things like, as we go through policy change that directly impacts students, we do surveys across, if we remember a year ago, on our weighted grade policy, we surveyed all the students involved in advanced coursework. Schools across our district use the committee structure to provide input about the school. At elementary, middle school, and high school level, there are various versions of a principal's advisory committee. The high school in particular has a belonging committee, there are student leadership committees, student government committees at most schools. High school continues to have an innovation team. We have student advisory for coursework, like in our Vantage Student Advisory Board. Student government at the high school, as well as student clubs and affinity groups that we offer to, one, both support students and gather input from students. At the district level, we have a variety of committees that involve students. One of the examples this year that has been really robust over the last three years, and this year is just impressive, is our Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, where the same conversations that happened with the Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee that meets in the evening happened with a group of 40 students, and they give input on coursework or curriculum changes, or process curriculum changes. We have a community committee called Tonka Cares, and we have had student presenters on that committee, and students who sit in just to learn about it. And this year, our new community ed director, Kim Carlson, has invited two students to sit on their community ed advisory committee, students that are involved in community education, and they attend those as they're available. Another way that we showcase students and their input are through videos, feature articles, podcasts, we've interviewed students on unique stories, publications, as well as traditional media feature stories and articles. So, all of these are different ways to include student perspective on the things that are happening in our system. Another very high-level student involvement are across our system, morning shows, or at the high school, you know, there's student shows and student announcements. Our elementary schools do some student-led programming. Students also may create clubs and organizations that align with their interest, that is another way that student voice impacts the student experience. And we have used student surveys at the middle school to weigh in on what other programming that kids would like to see. Our high school, or middle school principals actually went to the high school and met with 10th graders and said, "What's missing in middle school?", and that was a key input This year, after last May's school board's planning, we identified a handful of ways to ramp up student involvement in decision making, and we made three key changes. One was that the board adopted grade levels, and we had our first meeting in the fall and the second one scheduled, where each of you are paired up with a grade level, and you'll follow them through their experience. We've also, as you remember, in November, had Vantage Public Policy students present to the board after doing some research on what student-schoolboard representation might look like. And actually, we have students here tonight that were participating in that, presented, and went through the whole process. So, we most recently did, at the high school, a student forum, and some of you were there for part of that, where we had about 40 students, and they listened to presentations and provided feedback on experiential learning, our belonging efforts, and our facility studies specifically to the high school. That feedback is going to come back to the board when Principal Erickson comes in May, and he'll be sharing some of that feedback. He may even be bringing student leaders to share that feedback. So, tonight, before we talk about what might be next, I've asked three students who have participated in different student voice opportunities to answer some questions for the board to give perspective. And I'm going to start by having the students introduce themselves and which activities they've been involved with.
Hello, I'm Rory Shone, I'm a junior currently. I'm involved in the Student Teaching and Learning Advisory Board. I was a part of the Vantage Public Policy Group who presented to the board earlier this fall, and I was also a table captain at the student forum recently.
Hello, my name is Shania Gibson. I am a part of a few clubs, but my main ones I'm participating right now in is the Student Belonging Committee. I was also a table leader at the student forum that we just had recently, and I also participate in rugby and our Women of Color Club at Minnetonka.
I'm Charlie Welch, and I am part of Principal's Advisory Council, and I was also a table captain at the forum, and then I'm also heavily involved in the theater program.
We talked earlier this week, why are you involved in giving student voice in the district? What makes you want to do that?
I just, I think it's important to hear everybody's voices, because we're, you know, we're all a pretty diverse community, and we need, we need to be able to express our opinions and to be able to create positive change within our community.
I think it's important for me to be involved, just because I know some pretty big decisions are made, and I think having that student perspective on those decisions that are impacting students definitely helps a lot, just to get another perspective and just kind of hear out what we go through as well to make those decisions.
I think when I hear the phrase "represent us well", that means representing the biggest stakeholder in our school, which is our thousands of students, and I think it's important that we hear as many of those voices as possible when it comes to making decisions that impact all of those students' lives.
Are there examples of where you've participated in student voice and you saw change?
Well, at, through the public policy presentation we did, I definitely saw more opportunity in students just realizing the impact that they can have. It almost seems, from my perspective, that there's kind of a border between the adults who make decisions than us students, so getting to participate in that presentation and knowing that the board wanted to hear from us was really exciting and felt really hopeful for all of us.
For our Student Belonging Committee, one of our main goals this year was to see how teachers can make students feel like they belong in the school and that they have a trusted adult with them. So, we threw out a bunch of ideas through our meetings, and one of the main ones were having a survey, and typically, we did have a survey, but going deeper into those questions of, "What can a teacher do to make you feel like you belong here?". And after a couple of months of thinking of questions and going about that, the survey did go out, and we are still revising that for next year as well, for going deeper in how can we make more change in student-teacher relationships.
With Principal's Advisory Council, the biggest thing that we saw change last year, there's a big focus on talking about anchor time, and, you know, some students think maybe like, you know, "Is this a waste of time? Are we actually benefiting from this?". And I think the general consensus is that we are. And last year, as Principal's Advisory Council, we kind of all decided it might be best to move anchor time to always be after class, because then, especially if it's first hour, kids are more likely to show up, and attendance will be better, because when it was before first hour, some kids would just be like, "Okay, I won't go to anchor time, but I'm going to come to class." And then, it doesn't always work out, but you can also, there's a lot more time to study for tests, if you have a test you'd like to study for, and then that test is next hour, it's a lot easier to do that, go straight from that, go straight from anchor time into class, not anchor time, different class, and then go to that class and take that test.
Thank you. Are there ways that you gather feedback from your classmates before you have a chance to give input? How is your voice more than just the three of you, if it is?
I would say for me, a lot of it is just my own opinions, but I would say, obviously, Principal's Advisory Council, we talk about a lot of stuff, but then also being in theater, it's a lot of kids. The show right now, I think it has like 40 kids in it, and it's all grade levels, and, you know, we talk about things, because we talk about how the show we're doing plays into, you know, the broader world and what's going on in our community. So, that's the main way I kind of get that sense from my other, my fellow classmates.
For me, I get that definitely just through communication with all my peers, so I know we're all in classes, so we have certain things that we feel, and rather than like expressing that to a teacher, because we are like friends, we'll tell each other, "I don't really like this, and I don't like this", or "I think we could approve upon this certain aspect". And with that, I carry that with me, and when I go to like a student belonging meeting, I'm able to voice that concern that's more than just like my personal opinions, but also there's other people who can back that up as well.
I think, just from universal experience, for example, I'm a student athlete, I'm on our school's volleyball team, and I think from my experience with communicating with my peers, whether they're in the same or different sports, we've all kind of had a universal experience as an athlete in Minnetonka, so I keep that in mind, and then I think relay that into what I do and how I share.
Board members, we have three amazing students in front of us. Before we have a discussion tonight, are there any questions you'd have for this group, unique to our discussion about student voice, whether it's on the model we're proposing, or that's been proposed to us, or other topics about student voice?
Do you folks, when you have an issue that you've brought to your peer group, and there's a consensus that this is important, and we'd like to see some change around that, do you feel like that results in meaningful change, and that communication makes it to the people who it needs to get to?
Yeah, I do. Personally, in my experience with the Student Teaching and Learning Advisory Board, we work with Dr. Ladue, and one of the things I brought up at a recent meeting was, I personally struggled with finding information about the SAT and the ACT. It kind of seemed, in my experience, that there's this assumption that all juniors knew what was going on, and that was kind of a self-led process, when I was kind of waiting for someone to give me the steps to go through that. And when I shared that experience, my peers then on the board, who have had different experiences at Minnetonka, all kind of agreed that this was a big source of anxiety, and seeing the adults in the room then nod along and write things down really made me felt, made me feel heard.
So, for each of you, if, imagine you're, that you were selected as a person to represent the student body on the board, or with the board. Can you kind of brainstorm quickly some ideas about how you would try to get as much input from a broad, you know, a broad selection of your fellow students to bring that input to the board?
I think that a way that we've already achieved this, that's gone pretty well, is the survey style, especially this year when we did, like I mentioned before, the teacher survey, asking students what looks like a teacher that cares about you aspect, and I think it's able to reach the whole entire school, because they're sat in class and they're like, "Here's the survey, if you would like to, please take it". And I think by giving them the option to take it or not take it, it's having people who genuinely care about the cause giving valid information that we can go forward with, and then we can hear as many voices as possible, and then go forward with the decision.
I would also, going along with what she said about, you know, the students taking the survey, actually people who care about the causes, I think it's important, if that were to happen, where there would be student representatives, that, I know Mr. Law mentioned this when he talks to us the other day, but how it would, the current idea would be maybe they'd be nominated by their teachers and then voted on by the students, and I think that's very important, because the teachers can see more what the students care about, as opposed to it being kind of a popularity contest of who gets to represent the student body.
I think, in my personal opinion, I think there's strength in numbers. I don't think one person can necessarily represent every experience, but like in my experience with the Teaching and Learning Advisory Board, I have that experience of, I went to school here through the Navigator Program, then through the Humanities Program, versus the person next to me went through immersion, or went through different classes. I think there's strength in having a different number of students with different experiences, who can then advocate for different aspects, and I really think that that's how you're going to get the most productive opinion and feedback.
Yes, Sally. So, I've been trying to think of how to pose this question. It's about, some folks may think that engaging students in these kinds of discussions can be somewhat performative, like, "Oh, good, you had the students at the table". And I know your experience has been, you've actually been at the table, and you've already shared with us some of how you feel like your voices were heard. What's the general vibe in the high school, from what you can detect? I realize that, you know, the period of time that you're in, in high school is only a short number of years, but what's the vibe among the student body in general, in terms of, do they feel as if leadership in the school is responsive?
I was thinking about this earlier, after I met with Superintendent Law. In my personal experience, like I mentioned earlier, it kind of seems like there might be a barrier. Before I got involved in all of these student voice aspects in the last year or so, I felt that barrier, especially when big decisions come out, like anchor time, like the removal of masks, like the use of the hub, all of which turned out to be positive decisions, but it almost felt like as students, we were a little blindsided, all of a sudden, our day is taking on a completely different form, and we weren't aware if students had input, if anyone had heard from us, and thankfully, everything turned out to be really great decision-making, and now the hub and anchor time are really productive uses of our time. But at the time, it kind of feels, felt like, "Oh, they're making decisions about our day without consulting us", and we weren't, we were just kind of told, "All right, this is how the process is going to be, we're not going to maybe trickle it in or experiment with it". So, it maybe felt a little abrupt, and I think having students at the table, just to listen even, and to feel included, and that sort of thing, would really help to break that barrier.
Yeah, I completely agree with that statement. I think on decisions that do end up affecting students and how they're going to progress in like their high school years, I think it's very important to have their voice on that aspect, just for the performance of the student, to see how they can excel in these bigger decisions that are made, like anchor time or the hub, and I feel like as a student body, like you said, we're a little bit blindsided, and it did end up helping us so much, but just having a voice of a student at the table to give their input of how it can go about, or just like throwing out ideas would be very beneficial.
Yeah, I totally agree with what they both said as well, and the only thing I'll add is, correct me if I'm wrong, but school board meetings are open to the public, correct? I would say maybe make that a little more well-known. I think if students knew that they could come to these meetings and sit in and hear the decisions that are going to be impacting their day-to-day life, because I, up until this year, I don't think I knew that you could come to these meetings and hear what was going on.
You're welcome anytime. Yes, Megan.
My question's more around the communication piece. So, you guys, as teenagers, youth, tend to communicate a little bit differently than us adults do. I mean, I didn't have an email address until I was in high school, so it's like a different paradigm. So, right now, we're doing kind of in-person opportunities, and then you guys have talked about surveys, but are there any other like mechanisms that you guys feel would be easier or more efficient to provide feedback to us, or to be involved in a way that maybe we're not able to generate on our own? You know, like, is there, is there anything that, that we could open up as a way for students to provide input that we're not doing right now?
I think it's more of making that input avenue more accessible to students, so I know that social media right now is a really big thing, like when we want to know things are happening in our school, we go to our principal's Instagram and see all the updates that are there. So, it's more of maybe having a social media page that, "Hey, this thing is coming up soon, if you click this link, you can sign up for this", and then the avenues are there for you to express yourself and go forward with that.
I would say, a big way a lot of us get information, including myself, is through the morning show, as was mentioned, and a lot of times, clubs will put up, there'll be a student club talking, and they'll hold a QR code, and be like, "Scan this for more information". And every kid is, I believe Vantage too, do they play the morning show at Vantage? So, every kid at the high school is watching the morning show. Teachers always say, "Put your phones away, it's morning show", especially when Mr. Erickson is talking. So, just having a QR code up, that we could have our iPads scan the QR code, fill out whatever it is you want us to fill out.
I think if I could add to that idea, if we're just brainstorming, the morning show is something everyone sees. If there's decision-making that happens at the board the previous night, I think it would be really interesting to see if students were able to then like receive kind of an update, like a, just one of their peers coming up on screen and saying, "Hey, this is what was talked about at the board last night", or the day before, "This is what's on the agenda if you're interested in these things", because I think if you find, if you reach a greater audience, you will find that there are students who are interested in what, the most of what you discuss, so that could potentially be an avenue, I think.
Dan?
Just one, one last, you know, there are a lot of things that we juggle as a school board, a lot of things we're responsible for, the number of balls David and the administration have in the air at any given time is staggering. So, we're always dealing with a great variety of issues, big and small. I'm just curious for each of you, particularly, is there a topic that you feel student voice would be really, really important for us to hear right now?
I know that at the student forum, one of the topics was experiential learning, and how could we expand that and go further with that? I think that would be very crucial to have students talking in, or having their voice in that, just because they are going to be offered these classes, they can express like what class we do want, what we don't want, and also, I think it's very important, just because it is, at the end of the day, their education.
The, ever since I've been in Minnetonka, the thing I've always wanted changed is the diversity, I think there needs to be a lot more diversity. I'm not sure how you go about doing that, but in elementary school, I went to the International School of Minnesota, and it was, you know, it was like people like me were in the minority, and it was great to experience that, because you got to, obviously, you weren't treated as poorly as some people were, but you kind of got to experience what that life was like. And, you know, like with theater, and this isn't because, you know, they're not accepting these people, we, our director always puts on the website, "Everybody is welcome, diversity is encouraged". But, you know, the shows we do, like, we're onstage, and it's just a bunch of white people, and that's kind of sad to me, honestly, that there's thousands of kids in our school, and there's not a whole lot of diversity.
I think it would be very important to hear students' voices on just kind of the aspects of scheduling and planning for the future. A big stressor in high school, you know, you hear about homework, you hear about mental health, but that big stressor is planning your future, and I think when it comes down to it, we need to better prepare students for planning out their courses, because for me and my experience, and in a lot of my peers' experience, we get to our junior year, and all of a sudden, there's classes, "Well, you can't take that as a senior, because you don't maybe have a prerequisite, or this only happens during this certain hour". I think talking to students about what impacts and what puts stress on them when they're planning their future, whether it's beyond high school or just in high school, is extremely important, because I know that's one of Minnetonka's main goals, is preparing successful students to then become successful leaders in their future. So, preparation and then de-stressing that process, I think is very, very important to hear student voice upon.
Thank you all. We'll certainly have this all in mind as we talk further.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Mr. Chair, this is a chance to talk about the proposal we have for student voice at the school board. The recommendation that came through last November was that, and we heard bits of it tonight, teachers would recommend students by grade level who would be good student schoolboard representatives, and that group of 16 to 20 people would meet on a monthly basis and review future board meetings, and then determine which topics they might be interested in weighing in on, and then they'd have some time to gather feedback. They would elect people to come, so there's a chance it wouldn't be the same person every month, or there might even be months where we wouldn't have students, but we'd have a structure to grab feedback on a topic. The board could also talk about future board meetings and say, "This would be a topic that we'd have students weigh in on". So, this, if that is the direction of the board, we would, we conform that these other structures have not been formed through board action, it's a board direction. If the board wants to move forward with that suggestion, we would start recruiting next year's seniors, juniors, and sophomores, with teachers probably in April, with some voting in May. Open to board feedback.
So, is the model then, the teachers will nominate a pool of students who are selected from by their peers, or is it just, I'm just not?
So, teachers would identify students. We would give teachers the criteria that we're looking for students that would be representative, good representatives of the student body, that could gather information, identify leaders who might come to the board meeting. And I envision it closer to what we had tonight, where they would sit and present student input about a topic, more than sitting and attending the full board meeting, just based on what we've heard from our students. But certainly, I'm open to board feedback.
Megan?
I had two questions. I know at one point, there was a proposal somewhere in the legislature to actually require student board members. Do we know what the status is of that?
I don't know. If that was the case, we'd have to do some work to see if what we're proposing would meet that requirement. I, I think that requirement was the rigid, someone sits at the dais and is attentive to board meetings. We'll monitor it, and we'd come back to it.
Okay. Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there had been an update on that. And then my second question was, I was just kind of thinking of the questions that we were asking the students, and I'm just wondering how we would scaffold the students that were selected, or just be thoughtful about kind of training them around how to gather feedback from a broader perspective. So, I would say I'm not giving like input into this, I just want us to think about what that would look like, because they're not going to just jump into this role and know what to do. So, just kind of have us think about, what does that look like, who's responsible for that scaffolding, kind of mentoring, especially like the first couple, once you've done it for a few years, and you have older students that can kind of mentor younger students and whatnot, I think it gets a little bit more routine, but in those initial stages, I think we'll have to be really intentional about making sure that the students are prepared to step into that role and do, and be successful at it, because I don't want students to come here feeling like they're, you know, not prepared, or not ready, or just like tokens. Like, I want, if we're going to have students here, I want them to be actually able to do the role and have it be a, not performative, but like a real useful thing for both them and us, so just want us to think about that.
Yes, Sally.
Just a quick response on the question about the legislative, proposed legislation. It did come up at the last AMSD Legislative Committee. It did come up at the last AMSD Legislative Committee meeting, just, just that it was on the table. And there's a meeting tomorrow morning and I will ask and let folks know.
Anyone else? Dan?
I, I like the timeline. I think that sounds great. So we can kick off the next school year with some sort of structure in place. And to Megan's point about the, trying, trying to make sure that this is a substantive and not performative way to, to gather student voice. I don't know where exactly I sit on just presenting on certain topics versus actually being up on the dais and having freedom. I, I think it's important that students have freedom to, to speak to anything on the agenda that might be of interest to them, but agree that the whole agenda might not and they might have specific things that they want to talk about or present about. So I would just want to see if we can figure out a way to flexibly allow whoever's sitting and representing the students on the board to lay in on whatever's in front of the board that evening. Because spontaneously, they might have input on something that would be really valuable for us to hear.
Practically speaking, it's a lot of work to get seven board members who are committed to the work adequately informed twice a month for everything we're talking about. And you're not taking a full load of high school courses and activities. I, I admire the aspiration. I can't think of a structure that wouldn't require me camped at the high school every two weeks, spending lots of time. So I just, I, I, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, you, you're talking about allocating eight hours every two weeks or four hours or a significant amount of my time or someone's time to bring people up to speed on things you're talking about. I, I, I don't know how that will work in theory.
Yeah, I think, and, and I'm not saying it even needs to be standard practice, but if just there's, there's wiggle room for flexibility to, for, for students to call an audible and say, oh, wait, we talked about this, we do have something to say.
Chris?
Yeah, just echoing Superintendent Law a little bit. And well, maybe first to Dan's point, I mean, going back to the student presentation and, and the proposal, I mean, I think we, I thought we heard from the students that, that, you know, they didn't want to attend meetings and sit here for, for the entire piece. And, and so I think that was part of the recommendation. And I, I would second Superintendent Law and just bring to the board, like, how much time do we want administration spending on this, right? We get an incredible amount of student voice and, and all these different things. And think about the, the student panel and the amount of district resources that were, were spent on that, on, on that, that event. And I think there's lots of good things. And so how much do we want to, I mean, again, you know, our goal is to get as much student voice as possible. So I'm not saying that, that this isn't the, the direction, but we get a ton, administration gets a ton. I think the board has learned so much through this process about where student voice is, is being implemented and, and it's being heard. Maybe the, the board isn't hearing it directly, but we're getting it through administration. And to me, I'd rather them spending their time on that than prepping, you know, a, a group of, of, of kids or really adding one more thing that administration has to do to get ready for, for this. I, I think we just need to take that into consideration because it's, it's definitely a concern of mine.
Megan?
I was just actually looking back at the November, I guess my understanding was different of what the students proposed in the fall. I thought that they proposed that there would be a student panel, or I can't remember what they called it, of elected from teacher nominations and that one or two of them would be designated as the meeting representatives and that we would format the meetings so the stuff that would be more interesting to students would be at the beginning so that they could then leave. So I guess some clarification around what that proposal was is needed because I think it sounds like we had different understandings of what the proposal was. But also, I think, you know, to Dan's point, like, I don't know that there would need to be hours of discussion. I think what I'm guessing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the students would get the same board packet that we get. And if there's something that they wanted to contribute or wanted to comment on, I wouldn't want to stop them from doing so. If they're here and present and want to contribute, I, I wouldn't want to say like, no, you're not presenting on that tonight. So I, I guess that was a question and a comment, but I just need some clarification.
And again, I just, I'm thinking practically, you get your board packet a week before the board meeting. In order to have them have the opportunity to be informed, someone's going to need to review it with them before they come on Thursday night, I think. Or, or not, and then they can just come to the board meeting and get the same information you do. We would have to be intentional about front-loading what topics would be student-relevant. You have the luxury of, of discussing what you'd like to do. I'm, I'm thinking about operationalizing, that's all.
Yes, Sally?
Yeah, I would, I, in respect to that, I would say, let's not overwork the dough. Let's start with something simple and see how well it is received and how well that engagement goes with the students and whether it's sustainable. And then if the students say, hey, we really like this and want to expand on it, maybe that's, we take our, take our lead from them.
Yeah, covering.
I thought I heard one of the students say that she liked the idea of having a lot of input from the students and not just having one or two students sitting here. It's like she, it was your question about the social media. She said it would be good if, if one student was able to look at the agenda the day before or something and say, here's what's coming, and then being able to report back the day after or something like that, which is kind of my concern as well, is I loved the student forum because we had so many different students. And I came out of there thinking, this is great because it's not just one or two students at the board, which has been my concern for a while of having one student. And I just thought the way we've been tapping into all of these different committees related to the students has been eye-opening for me personally with all of the different diverse committees that we have. So that was just kind of input that I was wanting to share.
Yeah, I just want to throw out, those are good points. I want to throw out that we're sort of talking about a bunch of things all at once, right? I mean, a lot of what we heard from the three students that were here and talking about all of the student voice opportunities that exist are, I mean, those have grown and that's because of board direction and, and your administration's work on that. So we're grateful for all of that. I think keeping some of these things in the hopper, like the student forum, things as sort of separate from this, what sort of student involvement in the actual board is, is important. And it also tells me that there remains to be a high level of enthusiasm in the student body for these opportunities. I, I am not going to say that we won't get some student representatives, especially if we have teachers selecting them and then they're either elected by their peers or acknowledged by their peers in some way, that we might not get some really fantastic student leaders who want to come and are enthusiastic to attend every two weeks, even if it's only the first 45 minutes.
Sure.
Or something like that. And that they, if, if it was clear that these are non-voting members, which is all we're talking about, they are only going to be providing the student lens on issues, if they have an issue that they are concerned about, it's not simply because they're politically active and they really want to chase something that they think the board should be doing, it's because they have a student, a student perspective to offer. And then having them on a similar schedule where they look at the packet and they send something out to their peers and say, here's the agenda for the meeting next week. I'll be available after school if anyone wants to give me earful. That would be up to the students to figure out. And with all of that said, I think Sally is right on. I think we need to sort of start with something that is going to be achievable and is going to give them a taste of what, what is helpful to them and what's helpful to us. We want to, we want to continue getting their, their input on decisions that we have before us and topics that are bubbling through. You know, Dan's question elicited three different topics from just those three students about things that they'd be interested in, in knowing about. So I think, I think there's an, I think putting the recommendation in written form that the board can look over and make sure we're talking about the same thing makes sense to me so that we can, if, if there are, because I, I agree with you, Megan, I sort of heard a slightly different version of what you described, but I didn't even go to all of the student forum either. So I, I know less than some of you about what we've done recently. But I think getting that in writing before all of us so we can, you know, sort of say, okay, yes, this, no that, let's just work it out in a way. And then the other thing that came up out of that is there's some other outreach we can continue to do, the principals can do, we can do, like a social media account, like maybe once a month, two of us show up on the morning show the week before the board meeting. You know, I think we can, those three students are very engaged and active in their high school community and we're a little surprised that you could come to this meeting twice a month if you want to and just sit and listen. So I think if we sort of make that push, I bet we will have some interested and engaged students. And if we don't, maybe that tells us that we only need a small, a small program.
Right. Megan?
I found myself wondering, like, their idea about using the morning show and maybe a QR code or something, that, I think that is a really powerful thing to think about because I, I was kind of thinking about, okay, well, how could we make this so that it's not another lift for administration or for Jeff Erickson? Or, I mean, is there a reason that like a board member couldn't meet with the leaders of that group, you know, like a week? Whenever we get the packet, one of us could go and sit down with them and kind of just go through it. And if they see something in there that they really want to gather student input on, then maybe they could generate a QR code to put in the morning show, board's going to be talking about this next week. I'm, I'm just trying to think about like, because I, I don't want it to be more work for admin, but I also think I don't want to give up on the idea of tapping into that as just another avenue. And then, you know, if they can, if they gather information and they want to come and have a part of that conversation on that topic, I think it wouldn't have to be necessarily a lift. Like, I, I'm guessing that one of the board members would be happy to sit down with students once a month or twice a month. And that could even be like a role we designate if it becomes a regular thing and useful and whatnot, so.
There's an existing written proposal, and I think I shared it in February with all board members about what this would look like, and I can resurface it. We've got some logistics. This group won't be prepped for either August meeting. Right? So, school hasn't started. So there, there's a, just some logistics. We can probably turn around from April until May, one more discussion about it with the proposal and as much as we can run out at that point in time on a, on a plan for, the piece that's not in there is the logistics of how do we inform this group and what do we expect them to do with it? Because what they had identified is they would, I mean, having interacted with the group many times, they would identify topics of interest, have discussions, and send representatives. We can structure it so that we expect people to come to every board meeting. That would, that would be different than what was proposed, but we can certainly do that. And then we can start the year and have a year where they either have rotating people come to board meetings, or they identify two people who are going to cover the evening board meetings as much as possible and maybe an alternate. That's a detail we have to figure out. What we, what, what we have to come up with next is, is our expectation that these are people that review every board agenda and identify if they want to send people. And some logistics about where they are going to sit because we're not, we don't have two empty seats up here currently. We, we've talked a little bit about that. But we'll bring that back for the April board meeting and we'll, with anticipation that we might be moving forward in May.
And then, and then before then, do you just need agreement from us as far as proceeding with the plan to select all of the students, just so the teachers have enough time to roll that out and, and do that process? I'm, I'm fully supportive of that while we continue to work on exactly how we're going to implement the involvement.
Sure. I, I think no one has questioned the idea that teachers might nominate students and students would vote on them. So that, I think we can move forward with that. Then we can.
If we can keep our timeline that way and then we're not holding up the process.
Sure. Yeah, I, I have no doubt we're going to learn some valuable things and there's going to be some bumps. You should be prepared for students who want to identify board topics. Currently, the only people who can identify board topics are the chair and vice chair. So you should be thinking about how, how do we, you know, they don't vote and they don't set agendas. So probably have to process, how do we gather info from people who are going to have different things to talk about? So.
All right. Any other last words? On this topic, I should say. All right. We'll move on to the nutrition services update. Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, another board goal was to continue to provide the highest quality meals possible to our community. Tonight, we have an exciting update on the progress we've made towards that board goal. And I have Executive Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Burejois, and Director of Nutrition Services, Kristin Turnblad. Mr. Burejois?
Thank you, Superintendent Law. I just got a few quick comments and then I'll turn it over to Kristin. But when, when I started with the district, Kathy Jorgensen was the head of, she was the Director of Food Services. And what's in a, what's in a name, right? A word? But one of the first things I asked Dr. Peterson to do was, is it okay if we can change to nutrition services? Because it says a lot more about that. And since then, I mean, the, the fund was being operated in, in very good condition from a financial standpoint at that time and, and everybody's doing the best they can to get the best food for students. So, but many school districts in the state don't break even. They require a subsidy from the general fund and we have not had to do that. Even during the COVID years, we had deficit, deficit spending, our revenues were low and, but we're still delivering meals. But we had enough of a fund balance that we did not have to impact the general fund either. And we've been, we've continued to operate in that manner where we are self-sustaining, self-sustaining for equipment because then we're not competing with, for equipment out of the capital projects fund or out of the operating capital fund. Again, just trying to push, push things into the classroom as much as we can and, and operate well. Jane Bender was Kathy Jorgensen's assistant at the time and she assumed the reins and she worked until, in that position until last year. And it seems like a million years ago, though. But, and Jane did a great job. And Kristin came on board in 2012, right? Working as an assistant. Kristin actually was able to fill in very, very ably for Jane while Jane was out with open heart surgery for, was it nine months, almost? So I always like to say that we run the biggest restaurant chain on the South Shore. So last, last year, we served over 1.4 million meals. So we, it's a lot of food, a lot of hard work. And, and we're doing it with fewer people because we still have the positions allocated, but we hire, if, you know, if you know anybody interested, we're still, we're still hiring. So the one other thing that I'd like to say is that Kristin has done a great job since she started in the full-time in, at the helm. A little skipper lingo there. And, you know, I like metaphors, right? And so I just want to say that she's been doing an excellent job. And in my book, Kristin is the Caitlin Clark of nutrition services directors. So anyway, over to Kristin.
Nothing but net.
Mr. Chair, Superintendent Law, members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight, I'm going to share with you just what we've accomplished so far this school year, changes that we've implemented, and then what's to come yet this year. All right. So I added a new member to our district team this fall. Her name is Alex, she goes by Alex, Alexandria Bosley. She is a registered dietitian nutritionist. She started with us mid-September after finishing her master's program at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, where she studied clinical nutrition. She also had her undergrad from Wisconsin in Madison as well. She is our coordinator of student nutrition. She sits with me on our nutrition advisory committee. And she's a lot of the backbone of what we've been able to accomplish, which I'll be sharing with you next. We have taken a lot of marketing initiatives this school year. A big part of We have taken a lot of marketing initiatives this school year. A big part of what I wanted to change when I started is just communicating what we do, getting that out to the parents, out to the community, out to the students. So we started an Instagram account, we started a newsletter, we revamped our website. We were getting a lot of common questions asked by parents or even students, and so what better way than to put that information on the website? Jackie's team, Communications, has been instrumental in helping us navigate how to start Instagram, the do's and the don'ts, the newsletter, the website as well. So thank you for that. We've also done a lot of flyers and announcements, especially at the high school level. And then we also revamped our Nutrislice, which is our parent-facing app, and students, it's in their app store on their iPads. We are showcasing the items that we provide every day on the menu individually, so you have pictures. And I'll talk more about what you can do on that app or online in a little bit. I first started by wanting to kind of, in a way, rebrand the department, right? Let's start fresh. What better way than to call it Tonka Fresh? And so we came out with a new logo this year. We have that on our newsletter, it's our logo on our Instagram account. It will also be coming soon on some of the items that we'll be selling in the future here. Our Instagram account, we have a lot of fun with it, right? You need to have some fun at work. We have a lot of fun, the students love to be in our pictures, they want to be, they want to give the thumbs up, or do the orange slice with a smiley face, you know, and be in, in photos. We do some local spotlights, we do kind of what we're doing every day out and about, whether we're sampling, whether we're taking part in the undercover principal video that came out with Chuck Arthur, if you all got to meet him. And then we also showcase our staff. We also celebrate, like, National Breakfast Week. We did, National Nutrition Month is currently this month. We also celebrated Alex, because she actually has a day in March to celebrate our DNs. And we just have fun with it, showcase what we're doing, new menu items, and a lot of it is student-focused. Our newsletter, then, kind of takes a deeper dive into what we post on Instagram. We pick some topics, we always showcase or highlight a local company, local partner of ours. And we kind of define local as, we're including Wisconsin, a little bit of Iowa, and then Minnesota. So, it's still pretty local. And then we also talk about samplings or specific topics. We've talked about in, including more ethnic foods, cultural foods in different areas, whether we're doing Indian food. We had chicken tikka masala today at the elementary schools. Most of the older kids did care, did like it, so that was great. We've also done sambusas, which are more of the Somali culture, and those have been a hit at all grade levels as well. So, we started at the high school with new menu items, and then we've kind of made it all the way now down to elementary so that they can experience those as well. All right. And then our department website, just updating that, we have allergens and special diets have actually become more of a hot topic amongst parents or new families to us, or recent diagnosed with celiac disease, for example. So we wanted to make sure we're highlighting that on the website, so that parents know that we, they can still partake in lunch with us. They don't have to just pack a home lunch. So we showcase Alex and being able to contact her, she walks them through how to request a special diet meal, what options we have. Currently, we have a one-week cycle, but we will be expanding that next year. We have a lot of great items that we have sourced to be able to have a gluten-free bun instead of getting a bag of Tostitos. So we're going to be expanding that next school year. And then flyers and announcements, you guys were talking about that just recently with the Student Voice. We do do a lot of flyers with QR codes at the high school. We did that to learn what, like, their favorite vegetables are. What would they like to see on the menu? What kind of fruits would they like? We also do that, announcing new menu items. Today at the high school, we had the debut of the omelet bar. And we always do an announcement in the morning, and we also come and give them a couple days heads up, too, so they can plan, think ahead. It's a great way to showcase, you know, what's to come. All right, the Nutrislice app. So, we gave it a little bit of a facelift this year. We broke it up by choosing one entree. So parents know that we're providing more than one choice to them, to the students every day. They, most of the times at the high school have four items every day that they can choose from, same thing at the high school. And the elementary is two choices, and then it lists all the sides available. So, you can, you can pick your entree, and then you have all of the sides as well. If you click on each of the items in the menu, you can actually see a picture. So that is new this year. We have been taking pictures, we have a ring light to go on the phone, and we have a little setup, it's kind of fun. Food photography, we're not experts at it, but we also have ingredients listed now online, all the nutrition facts are there as well. We've put some allergen icons on items now, too, as you can see in the photo. It just helps kind of ease that experience at home when getting ready for the day for students. The other great thing that there is, is there's a carb count calculator. Now, most people probably wouldn't look at that, but there's a lot of high school students right now learning in their nutrition classes about carb counts, or even with athletics, like, they're learning from their coach, hey, we need more protein, that sort of thing. They're using this calculator, and we've actually been showing students this week, and now word is spreading that they can use that carb count, you know, for their, their use. And then we have a fun feature called the allergen eliminator, is what I call it, but it actually can filter out allergens so that you, it will actually cross out and eliminate that food item if it contains an allergen that a student cannot have. We also have some new highlights that we can put on items, which we'll be showcasing that next school year, which will be local, what's local, what's farm-fresh, or farm-to-school, that sort of thing. So, some exciting highlights in that area. Student Voice has been really big for us this year. It's probably one of my favorite areas that we've done, with sample tasting, surveys, and then student groups. So with taste testing, in November, we did jicama, sugar snap peas, and orange bell pepper slices. We had a sign up for volunteers from our Nutrition Advisory Committee, where they were volunteering to help serve food to the students. Jicama, we had explained that over and over, they're like, what's the, we want more white stuff, what is that, right? So then jicama, then, well, how do you spell that, right? So, we had some fun with that. That was probably their favorite out of everything they sampled. Jicama and sugar snap peas are now regularly on the menu each week. In March, we just actually, last week, finished sampling quinoa and brown rice. That's that top-left photo. The kids actually really liked it. There was no salt, or pepper, or butter on it, and they, they enjoyed it. We called it kind of the super grain, right? So Alex is, has this wealth of knowledge on nutrition that she's able to talk with students and kind of explain it at their level, while it's elementary, whether it's elementary or middle school or high school, and explain, you know, the importance of having, you know, a whole grain within your diet. We also have coming up in May, mango was actually one of the top fruits that the high school students wanted to see. So we are going to do mango sample testing in all the schools. We pick every day, we're just there for the entire lunch service, and have fun. They know that we're there, because it's always Alex and I, the duo, and we just go around, and they're excited, and then they know that we can also take photos, too. So then, they're even more excited. And at the high school level, we've done a couple additional samplings, and we've called it the Try It Tuesday. Students know what Try It Tuesday is, we have a specific area in the cafeteria, it's in what used to be called the Lighthouse, or it's still called the Lighthouse, but what used to be called the Lighthouse. And we've also done dragon fruit with them, and then also papuza sampling. So student surveys, just some that we've done, we've done the vegetable survey, fruit survey, and then also we did a survey with a QR code to form a meatless interest group, so. The student groups. So, this was an idea that I had heard when I was, were at my first director's meeting. So we get together about every six months, Southwest Directors. We were talking about involving students in, in their choice, and someone had mentioned that they do a Student Choice Day. And so I was thinking about that on my drive back, and I was like, oh, well, we could do Student Choice Day, where we meet with individual leaders within each building, chosen by the principal. And then we tell them the importance about nutrition, how to build menus, kind of give them an insight into our, our world, and then they actually get to pick new items and actually pick a menu. So this, this spring, or winter spring, we have been working with Clear Springs, Excelsior, and Deep Haven. We have met with each of them twice, three times now, and they will be debuting their menu district-wide, all elementaries, in May. So we'll be meeting with them after spring break to finalize, they get to pick between two menus, because we still have to make sure we're following our USDA guidelines. So, they voted on the items that they would like, we get to go in the classrooms, and some of these, we invited the Excelsior kids to the boardroom, which they thought was pretty cool. Superintendent Law joined us for that first meeting as well. And then, the other picture there is the meatless interest group. I brought in 19 different options available to us that would be meatless, that we could add to the menus. One of the more popular items was the Impossible brand, if you're familiar with that. And they really liked the burgers, the Impossible burgers. And then as far as the, like, well, they call it Kicken. Instead of it being chicken, it's rebellious. And that's actually a company that I had found this summer when I had the opportunity to go to our annual national conference. And it's rebellious, they're called Kicken patties and Kicken spicy patties. But those will be debuting at high schools and middle schools in the next couple weeks after spring break, so. Let's see. All right. And then our Nutrition Advisory Committee. It's a picture of the two moms that have helped us at papuza sampling for Try It Tuesday at the high school. Our three goals for the committee this year was breakfast, particularly reducing the added sugars in breakfast that we provided, and expanding the choices that we had, providing more protein, less grain, and then also taking a look at the fruit. So, with breakfast, another item I had found this summer that I order three pallets of at a time is called That's It. You might see that maybe at Costco or in the store, but they're the mini fruit bars. Well, they came out with a new K-12 product called Crunchables. So we now offer fruit bars and Crunchables every other day throughout the week, along with a, it's called the Big Apple Sauce Pouch, I think, by Zizi's brand, and that is a half a cup of fruit. So we kind of alternate that, along with offering a fresh fruit as well every day. Our second goal in the Nutrition Services Advisory Committee was communications, and that we have accomplished this year by, with our new newsletter, our website, and then, as well as creating Instagram. We post about two to three times a week on our Instagram. We are up to, like, 230 followers, which is great. We're, you know, new, but we'll get there, we'll get there. And then farm-to-school, that's, was a, a big topic, too, in our group. And there was a mom that was part of the group that offered to do some research behind it. We, you know, what would be sustainable? You know, we're feeding almost 8,000 meals a day, how do we have something that's coming from farm to be able to feed every single student, right? So what we started first with was the Great Apple Crunch. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a Great Lakes apple crunch where this Minnesota, Wisconsin, I believe Michigan as well, partake in the second Thursday of October, where everybody crunches into an apple. You're really supposed to do it at noon, but they count any, any apple crunch of a local apple that day counts towards it. So, I signed us up and we participated. We also collaborated with the Wellness Committee, so that the staff snack that month, too, was also a local apple. We had a lot of fun with that. And we also provided, then, with the Wellness Committee, Alex put together some literature with the Great Apple Crunch, as well as providing, you know, fun activities, whether free or paid, to do apple orchards, that sort of thing, for weekend fun activities. We also have hydroponics. So, we are doing romaine lettuce through what's called suburban farms in St. Louis Park. And we do, we get about 80 heads of lettuce. So we aren't able to do every single school, but we rotate so that our chef salads that we're making at the elementary level, middle school, and high school level, all will experience hydroponics, at least in some, some fashion. And then our produce company that we have does a fantastic job of sourcing local fruits and veggies for us. That's where they look first before anything else. So we, we can, like, when I needed dragon fruit, I can be like, hey, can I get dragon fruit in a couple weeks? And they're like, absolutely, how much do you want? So they're a great partner to have as well. So new menus. I had a goal of doing a new menu every month, and I think I surpassed that, because we've been doing a couple, like, two or three new menus a month. You probably have all heard about the dumpling menu that we introduced on the Chinese New Year. We do chicken veggie dumplings or vegetable dumplings. Chicken tikka masala is also new, the burrito bowl, which we had tonight for dinner. And then the sambusas. We offer a beef or a lentil on that day. Sweet and sour chicken, we just served that the other day at the high school with fried rice and an egg roll. The kids love the egg roll. They wish they could just have the egg roll, but I'm like, no, let's have some chicken. We also started doing chili this year. A little late in the game, next year we'll start earlier with the colder weather. But overall, I think the kids enjoyed having that chili. They also get cornbread poppers, they kind of, you know, little cornbread poppers, and frito chips as well. We tried papusas, we did a sample taste testing with that with the high school students. What we found when we brought that menu on, we've learned a lot. So most of them have turned out well. But papusas is one that we just, no matter how many different sides we were trying with it, it just wasn't something that the students enjoyed. So, you know, we tried something new, they tried something new, and, and we'll, you know, keep, keep trying new items. Beef and lamb euros, that was a new one at the high school this year as well. The omelet bar debuted at the high school this well, and it will trickle to, trickle down to the middle schools, and in some fashion, elementary. And what we learned today, they get a cinnamon roll with that, a whole grain cinnamon roll. With the omelet bar, we're going to actually do scrambled eggs instead, so that they can add some diced bell pepper, red and green bell pepper, they can also add a turkey ham, diced turkey ham with it, too. We kind of renamed it today, we're going to call it the Great Scrambler. So just, you know, trying a new menu item, and it's okay if it doesn't work out, we're going to revamp it and just keep trying, so. We also did Nordic Waffles. That is a company, they actually have a booth at the state fair. Nordic Waffles, they've changed it into a whole grain waffle, and then they have egg and cheese or sausage and egg waffle. And then in May, our new menus that will be debuting are the Student Choice menus, which are very exciting. And I have a feeling those will actually go the other way up into middle school and high school, too, because I think they're going to get jealous. Okay, the numbers. So, breakfast and lunch participation. So I wanted to look for September to February year-to-date, and I wanted to include where we were before COVID happened, just to kind of give reference point. And before COVID, we were paid meals, so we did not have a breakfast program either, we're in year two of that. And if you can look at 18, 19 school year to the 24, 25 school year, just at elementary alone, we've grown 10%. Now, yes, meals are free, but I do have to attribute to some of that increased participation, just in the changes and allowing them to pick what's on the menu, not just that it is free. Also, the, you know, middle school has grown, even the high school. We hit over 2,200 meals on Sweet and Sour Chicken Day. Dumpling Day also gets that high as well. And that's just the lunch meals. That's not including, like, the à la carte that is also purchased, we could turn that into the meals, but that's, this is just school lunches that are purchased and breakfast. All right. So coming soon. Yes, that is the food truck in a photo. And the other photo is, it says campus cuisine, we're going to have a different sign, it's going to be bringing back the pier. So I had the pier in high school, when I was at the high school, and bringing back that name, it's kind of perfect. So it's another à la carte line being added at the high school in our area that we already existed, have existing, and another way for students to not be inside the cafeteria, but more out in the hallway so that the busyness is kind of spread out. but more out in the hallway so that the busyness is kind of spread out. Our food truck currently is getting, it's had its floor done, its walls, its ceiling. They're putting in the windows on the outside. That will be debuting later in April. And then we are going to bring it up to, it will, it will. And then we'll be bringing it up to the high school to end this year, just as offering it as like an à la carte line. But we already have plans for next school year to be able to bring it to all schools and have some menu ideas for that, so that it can be a reimbursable free lunch for all students. There are logistics that need to go into that, right? But we have a really solid plan on that, so pretty exciting stuff on that. The peer would be offering menu ideas like bento boxes, and this is where that Tonka Fresh label is going to come in. We will be putting a label on all of our bento boxes. It's part of our requirement to make sure we're listing allergens and ingredients on those boxes. These are just some examples. We've already created like, like a standard operating procedure on how to build the box for our staff. So one would be a taco kit to go, that's the bottom left. The top one is a yogurt parfait, and the bottom right one is more of that turkey and cheese cracker bento box. We also have salads, pre-made salads, pre-made sandwiches, and pre-made wraps, too. So those menus are already created. We're hoping to roll that out after spring break. And then last but not least, this is some of my staff. Without them, we wouldn't be where we're at today. We did a challenge this year for Halloween that they could come up with themes within their kitchens. So this is just some of them, not all of them. But we do like to have fun. That's what makes the day go by, right? So, thank you.
Thank you for that great report. Any questions or? I love seeing the progress we've made. This has been, improvements in nutrition services has been a perennial core goal, and we're, I'm very pleased to see the direction it's going and looking forward to see what's coming next.
Thank you.
Chris?
You stole most of what I was going to say, but just echo in and just say thank you. Your openness to try new things, all the different communication ideas. Love all of the things that we heard, and thanks for a great presentation.
Thank you.
I have two comments and a question.
Okay.
The comments are just kind of anecdotal, and I've shared some of them with you, but I thought that the rest of the board might like to hear them. So I've gone to some of the Nutrition Advisory Council meetings, and I think there's been a lot of enthusiasm. Feedback that I've heard, the kids really are liking the pictures. And the example I can give is this morning, I said that the menu was tikka masala, and my nine-year-old said, what is that? Can I see a picture? And so I pulled it up, and he's like, I'll try it. So I think that they're starting to recognize that those things are out there and that they can see a picture and help. And it's, I think, great, the feedback I've heard is that from parents, having the menu up and being able to, like, have the conversation, or the kids can pull it up in their iPad and see what the lunch menu is. It's letting kids make the choice and advocate for what they want to eat, and I think that's really great. The other piece around the carb count is we have a lot of students that have diabetes. And one of my neighbors has a young child with diabetes, and was like, this is great because now, like, it's easier for us to not pack a lunch. So that's another just action step that I think makes a difference in all feel, like, kids feeling like they belong, you know, like that they can get school lunch, too. So I really appreciate that. My question was on the slide that had the percent, the utilization of, like, who's getting lunches? Yeah, so there's two numbers.
Yes.
What's the first one versus the second one?
So I should have explained that. Sorry about that. The first number is the breakfast program, and the second number is the lunch program. So 1819, we didn't have a breakfast program, and then it started last school year. You're welcome.
Yeah, just echoing what everyone else said. I think this is awesome. I love getting the newsletter and reading it and seeing what everyone's got to try. The meals that you bring us here to try are fantastic. Everything's been great. My wife works in Clear Springs, and the anecdotal feedback from that building is, is awesome. I think it's, it's both just great nutrition practice and just financially, really, really good, that we're sourcing a lot of stuff locally, especially with the uncertainty surrounding tariffs on agricultural products and things on the national level. I think that's going to pay dividends for us and be a really smart financial move. And my question is, is when these elementary schools premiere the meals that the students designed, is there any way you could let us know so we could maybe go and celebrate that with them?
Of course. Absolutely. Yes, we can arrange that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any day you want to show up and go through a line, just show up and.
Do we have a number?
Do we have a number to give at the register?
You're doing research.
Yes.
I'm telling you, it's an omelet bar.
Yes, definitely. Yes.
The Great Scrambler.
The Great Scrambler, yes.
I thought you was talking about Fran Tarkenton.
Deep cut from Paul.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, that brings us to item three, review of 2026-27 calendars. Superintendent Law?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, our district plans calendars two years out, so we recently approved earlier this month the calendar for next fall. Tonight is the first presentation of the product of the Calendar Committee, a committee that Executive Director of Communications, Dr. Getty, could provide insight about. But that committee has preview of the year. Keep in mind some things that are fixed on our calendar. The legislature picks the start date, having to be after Labor Day, and a late Labor Day drives an unusual calendar, along with other things. But Dr. Getty will preview that calendar, gather board feedback, if necessary, send information to the Calendar Committee for this eventually to be approved as a preliminary calendar. Dr. Getty?
Thank you, Superintendent Law, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Law, and members of the board. I'm sitting here today in the shoes of our Executive Director of Human Resources, Angie Flowers, who can't be with us and leads this calendar committee. I do serve on it, so I was here for all these meetings, and we've debriefed pretty thoroughly, so I'm going to do my best to represent her words. Minnesota law requires us to adopt a school calendar by April 1st prior to the start of the upcoming year. Here in Minnetoka, we stay one year ahead of that requirement. As you know, we already have a calendar for next year set. But in order to stay ahead of what we want and allow for our community to plan in advance, we continue to meet in the spring and finalize the school calendar in the spring of each year. In February, on the 24th, our committee met. It consisted of district staff, of administrators, parents. We had student representatives, paras, and teachers, and we discussed the calendar options for 2627. As a committee, we took into consideration the required parameters for calendar planning, as Superintendent Law mentioned, some of which include the contractual agreements of the number of teacher duty days, the appropriate number of student contact days, conference days, the law requiring the school year not to begin before Labor Day, except under certain circumstances, which made it challenging because Labor Day falls in the second week of September. That's the very last day that it can, and that naturally will extend the school year further into June. And so that was something that our committee wrestled with as we go through this. Thanksgiving, in the past two years, teachers and students have been granted the day off before Thanksgiving, and it's very popular, and it's something the committee would like to continue long-term, but is interested in pausing that option for this year, for the 2627 year, given how late Labor Day is. On the draft calendar, and so that is here, that you all have, on the draft calendar, you'll notice that the day before Thanksgiving is not listed as a day off for students and staff. That is being recommended so that the school year doesn't end on Monday, June 14th for students, and run inherently longer into the month of June than, than it could. This idea came from an administrator and was supported by the committee, including the students and the parents, who all felt like getting that far into June would really be problematic for families. The committee was clear that this was a recommendation for this year only and would like to come back with something else for the next year. We do have a lot of repeat members of the committee. We have some that, that come back and then some that change out. Late starts and early releases was another topic. We removed them from the calendar for 2627, given our recent change to full professional learning days for teachers. The district has surveyed our community, as you've seen in previous presentations from Dr. Ladue, and there's been an overwhelming support to continue with full professional learning days in lieu of late starts and early releases. The Calendar Committee agreed. The dates that we have as placeholders of where we believe they may fit best at this, at this time, were what we set. However, following our meeting with the Calendar Committee, specifically as it related to Thanksgiving, we gathered more input from the teaching and learning team about professional learning days, and district administration now believes that moving the October 30th Professional Learning Day to that day before Thanksgiving may be a better option. That would give more flexibility and more notice to families for holiday planning, as it is a swap, so students would have that day off. And it doesn't hold any additional days at the end of the year. Given that the committee is recommending that we pause on having the day before Thanksgiving off for one year, we believe this is actually a good idea, would replace that. The dates can be modified by the board at any time. We can discuss this change with the Calendar Committee if the board agrees that it supports the idea of swapping October 30th for Professional Learning Day with the day before Thanksgiving. There is no recommendation to add additional days for observations. You will recall that we added Yom Kippur and Eid to the 2025-26 calendar. There was some discussion about reducing the number of days observed, since we are unable to include every observance, but there was no change in the recommendation from the committee. We continue to list observances on the published calendar. And in addition, Dr. Matt Riega prepares an assessment calendar for teachers and administrators so they can be mindful for testing and assigning major projects when there's a religious or cultural observance, particularly when there's fasting involved for students and staff. We balance days in each quarter as much as possible, with the last quarter having the most days, and largely that's because there's so many assessments in the final quarter. I'd like to now review the recommendation from the committee, so if you want to grab your calendar if you haven't already. This format's for planning purposes only, so this is not our final published calendar. The calendars are eventually published online, and of course, we also currently have a wall calendar as well. We'll begin the draft calendar by rolling the, we, we begin creating the draft calendar by rolling the 2025-26 calendar forward. August would continue to be our workshop weeks and planning days, and the first day of school is scheduled after Labor Day on September 8th. We have conferences and MEA in October. Thanksgiving break is proposed as two days for this year only, but students will have the day before Thanksgiving off if we switch that Professional Learning Day again from October 30th. Winter break would begin on December 24th. We understand that's a late start to winter break. That was a hard one for the Calendar Committee to talk through, but the committee believes that's the best day to begin, based on meeting the other parameters of the calendar, including in particular balancing the semester days and having enough time for assessments and AP and IB in particular at the end of the quarters. Teachers would return for their planning day on January 4th before welcoming back students on January 5th. Teachers really preferred that option of having that day back first, planning, and then having the students come in or, and professional development. Students, educators, and parents all agreed with beginning spring break on March 29th. We actually had proposed it a week later, and there was a really robust discussion about that, and moving it back made sense to everyone, including our athletic director, who also supported that recommendation. We always do think about those spring sports and where they fall on the calendar. It affects a lot of families. The outline for the recommended calendar is as follows. The first day of school for all teachers would be Tuesday, August 31st, for Professional Learning in 2026. The first day of school for grades one through 12 students would be Tuesday, September 8th. The first day of school for kindergarten students would be Thursday, September 11th. Fall conference dates are Thursday, October 8th would be from 4:00 to 8:00, and Friday, October 9th, from 8:00 to 4:00. And then there would be an additional four hours of conference time to be assigned by building sites for the weeks of October 5th and October 12th. And that would round out that other day, that full day. Winter break would be December 24th through January 1st. Spring conference dates would be Thursday, March 4th from 4:00 to 8:00, and Friday, March 5th from 8:00 to 4:00, with, again, an additional four hours of conference time to be assigned in the building sites the week of March 1st and March 8th. Spring break would be March 29th through April 2nd. The last student day would be Friday, June 11th, and the last teacher day would be Monday, June 14th. So that's what we have for you at this time. We know it's a hard year. I think we all struggled with that. It's cycles, and so there are always, like, we build up to this. This is going to be the roughest as far as it goes for having a short winter break, a shorter spring break, and to think about that day before Thanksgiving. So that is the recommendation thus far from the Calendar Committee, and I'd welcome any questions.
Board members, any questions, comments? Megan?
Yeah, was that the question? I noticed that Wayzata is moving a week earlier before Labor Day, and I kind of read the statutes there, but I'm going to be honest, I didn't quite understand. So you can only go under, you can only go before Labor Day if you're doing construction?
That exceeds, like, $400,000.
Right, but then it's, there's like agreements with a district qualifies, or if it's a same schedule as an adjoining state? Can you just talk a little bit about that, or do you not?
Maybe Superintendent Law can.
So the, the construction piece is really about creating a longer summer the next year. So, because starting earlier shortens your construction window. But if you want to, for example, if on this calendar, we wanted to create a longer construction window in the summer of '27, we'd move a week earlier. My perception is there, there is some flexibility with the state. We might qualify. Our challenge would be if we weren't doing an atypical construction, the state might ask, what's new this year? We, you know, we typically do millions of dollars of construction every summer, and we haven't ever had to adjust our calendar. If we were going to do the bond that we have out for review and comment, that might make sense the year before we plan to build. So sadly, if we were thinking we were going to do a bond in November, and we were going to start construction the next year, it would make sense to move the 2526 calendar and potentially this one, 2627. That, depending on how that all works. So there is a construction piece. The adjacent state piece, of course, doesn't apply to us, but that, that's for districts that are, are trying, they might share busing across a border. And so the North Dakota, Wisconsin, that doesn't have the state for summer resort lobby, you could align with those. North Dakota routinely finishes in May. And so there are some reasons why districts that border North Dakota would take that calendar.
So, like, I'm looking in Edina, pretty much every year starts before Labor Day, and Wayzata is for 2627. So are they getting, are they doing construction to make that happen, or did they get some other exception? I'm just wondering, like, if this really was a, a problem going so late in June, if that was an option we could even consider, or is, do we not have anything that meets?
We could certainly, if the board is interested in us exploring options for 2627 to start a week earlier, there was a discussion at the Capitol this week also about this. I don't know how much traction they're going to get, but if you would like us to consider starting a week earlier this year, we certainly can explore that and come back to you.
One thing we do here, and I've been on the Calendar Committee for a long time, is that families really enjoy that final, long, extended weekend as a wrap-up to the summer. You know, last time to go to their cabin or last big family trip, and then starting fresh once the, and our families are used to it. And so I think that that's just a consideration as well, is that it would move everything forward, including teacher training. It will, you know, everything would move up, and so that would cut into summer for teachers and for families.
At a minimum, I'll research how Edina gets around it.
Yeah, I was more just curious, like, if it was even discussed, or if it wasn't discussed because it wasn't an option, you know? So if it was an option.
It wasn't, it wasn't discussed, but, but I don't know that it was because we didn't think it was an option. I think it was not discussed, like, it wasn't something that someone raised and said, we really should kick it back. But we certainly can take it back and discuss it if it's something the board wants us to.
The committee didn't recommend it, but I will report back to the board on what Edina does to move their calendar forward.
Our process now is, this is our first time looking at it. It comes back to a future board meeting for approval?
Likely in May.
I'll just add, I wasn't necessarily making a recommendation. I was just more curious about if the conversation had happened or how these other districts. I'm kind of wondering if some of our other surrounding districts, like, if Wayzata starts earlier, then we're going to get the question of, why didn't you guys start earlier? So just kind of thinking it through.
Yes, and keep in mind, we're a year early with this. So we, you approve a draft of the, or, I mean, we just publish a draft of it, and then we formally approve it the next March.
I think it's worth having that conversation as to what the, is it, is it? I think it's worth having that conversation as to what the, is it, is it really an option for us or not? If, if it's, if there's a, if there's a way to deal with the statute, but our families are uniformly opposed, then that tells us something. But if people are interested, it is, it does seem a weird feature of our calendars. Any every year.
We could certainly survey our community to see if there's interest in starting a week earlier in the 202627 school year, and then you know of people who've responded if that's important.
One thing, too, though, is we really do try to structure the committee so that it's representative of the entire district, like, all the different constituents, and then they bring input from all of their different, so just offering that perspective as well. It's about 40 people that sit around a table, and we do it for about three hours, and then we come back again and talk for three more.
So perhaps we can determine if it's an option. We can ask the committee if this is worth going back out to the community, or if they have thoughts on it.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather ask the committee because they do a lot of hard work on this, and I wouldn't want them to feel like we are going around that process. I think it's been a very good, productive conversation year after year. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
So that'll wrap us up for tonight. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Bye.